Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of December 6th, 2023. We have a lot of people. I'd like you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one being. We have quite a group here today, and this is one of the things that makes us happiest, I think. So we have Duval Elementary and Hanson Middle School student presentations today. So we're going to start with the Duval students.
I'm Dr. Bowley, the proud principal of Duval, and thank you so much for this opportunity. And tonight I brought two groups with you to showcase different areas that we're working on as educators and also as students. The first group involves our fourth grade team over here. As you've heard before, we have win blocks for grades one through five, and WIN is the acronym for What I Need. And it's a 35-minute period in the day where the entire grade level is broken up into groups, and they receive targeted support. The target areas are dependent upon their needs. It could be to close the gaps in math, close the gaps in reading and writing, but it's also to stretch their skills and knowledge as well for some kids. Mrs. Tarquini brought here tonight. Mrs. Tarquini is the fourth-grade lead teacher, and she is the facilitator of this WIN group: Alex, Callie, Coleman, Eli, and Shawn. You guys hear me? Okay. First, I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for giving these fourth graders a chance to present. It's a pretty big deal to be in fourth grade at Duval because you're upstairs, but then this is kind of even a bigger deal for them. So these five students that I have, they are at or above grade level in math, but beyond that, they have some characteristics that make them a little bit more. They are students who welcome a challenge, sometimes even asking for the challenge. They set very high expectations for themselves, and they love to work together as a team. So this was a PBL math project. PBL, another math acronym for education, Project Based Learning. The boys decided to do a thematic unit, so their idea was all around the national parks, which goes along with our social studies standards. And they had to integrate different parts of like research, reading, most of it was math, a big chunk of it. They had to practice some geography skills. And the girls planned a nice trip to Europe. Both groups of students worked really, really hard. This has been going on for the last two and a half weeks, and when I tell you, up until dismissal, we were still making tweaks to make sure it was perfect. And that was on them. They wanted their, to present to you their very best work. So I'm going to hand it over to Shawn, and he can get started. Sound good?
Right up at the podium. At the podium would be great. Yep. That's weak.
As a group, we decided our best choice was to fly from Boston to Utah, then Utah to Florida, but we would rent an RV to drive back to Boston from Florida. The cost of a flight from Boston to St. George is $305. $915 for three of us. The cost of a flight from St. George to Miami is $309. $327, I mean, $927 for three of us. The total of airfare is $1,842. The blue lines are where we flew, and the red line, red lines are where we drove.
This is interactive. I didn't realize this wasn't like touch screen. So this is interactive. When you click this map right here, it actually takes you back to the very beginning of their planning.
Days one through three, we will be in Utah. It was most cost-effective to go camping. Camping costs $138 per night, and that includes the rental of a four-man tent, sleeping bags, and a campsite. When we arrive in Florida on day four, we will be renting on RV, which will cost $75 per day. We will stay at RV campsites that come complete with hookups. The campsite costs $104 per day. The total cost in the RV rental and campsite is $612, making our loading total $1,026.
Hi, my name's Eli Tyleson. The activities will cost us a total of $381. In Zion National Park, we will be doing a junior ranger training and hiking the mountains on the first day. Once the day, on the second day, we will canoe it for $14 per person and the next bicycle renting of $18 per person. For the third day, we will go on a hike and rent a bicycle. On the fifth day, we will do a night hike and rent paddle boats. On the sixth day, we will rent a bicycle and go on a horseback ride. As you can see, I did the math, and the grand total is $381.
Let's go.
The way we wrote this down, because there were five parts, was, boys took three, and the girls now will do two different parts.
We planned a trip to Europe. We used the Big Five to help guide our plan. We used math, geography, research, and technology. From Boston to Munich, it was $678. Then going back to Boston from Milan, it costs $924. And all for the cost of flying to Europe and back, it was $1,368.
I think they went to Europe.
And not here.
On the second day and the third day, we were in Germany, and on those days, we took a tour. And we took a tour, which was $15. We visited a museum, which was $14. We rented a bike for $12, and we took a hike, which was free. On the fourth day and fifth day, we were in France, and we took a tour for $15. We visited a historical site for $18. We took a hike, which was free, and rode a paddle boat for $9. On the sixth and seventh day, we were in Italy, and we took a tour, visited a historical site, and we rode a paddle boat for $9. The total of the European, our European trip is $3,681.
Just so you guys know, they all couldn't believe how expensive these trips were. But little do they know that that wouldn't even like cover them for a day if they actually went to Europe. So, all right, thank you again, and Mr. Mohall?
Good evening. My name is Dan Mohall, and I am the proud assistant principal of Duval Elementary School. This past summer, two of our teachers, one is Erica Tarquini, who just presented with her fourth-grade team, fourth-grade students, and Melissa Blandon, our fifth-grade teacher, attended a district writing summer PD led by Shelley Farrell. The teachers collaborated with district colleagues to design grade-level-specific writing curriculum to support the needs of our students. So tonight, our fifth-grade team, that comprises of Adam Beltramini, Catherine Cushing, Melissa Blandon, and Liz Jordan, are here to showcase what they are doing in the classroom. So our lead teacher in fifth grade, Melissa Blandon.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Hi, I'm Melissa Blandon, fifth-grade teacher at Duval. I came with the fifth-grade team, as well as four student representatives, to share what we've been working on in writing. Last month, we started a district-wide Grade 5 narrative writing unit. In this unit, we were looking at a series of images from the Chris Van Alsberg book, The Mysteries of Harris Burdick. In this book, the illustrations are accompanied only by a title and one line of text, which opened up the ability for students to write their own stories to go with the image. So our students worked very hard to come up with creative imaginative stories, and they're going to each read an excerpt from the stories that they created. We're going to start with Salma.
I'm Salma Flori, and I'm going to read Mr. Linden's library. "Are you ready to go to the store?" Lillian's mom asked. Lillian, a naive young girl, was about to start the most interesting days of her life. "I'm coming, Mom. Let me get changed," Lillian responded from upstairs. She put on her favorite red shirt and denim shorts. Lillian went towards her window and took her daily breath of fresh air, and then skipped downstairs to her mom. Lillian stated, "I'm here, Mom. Let's go." They got in the car and went to the grocery store. They ended up getting Lillian's favorite cereal, some more bread, and a bundle of fresh vegetables for dinner. "Can we get cereal to last the entire lifetime?" Lillian joked. "Very funny," Lillian's mom said. "I can't do that, but I'll get you lifetime supply of books." "But Mom, you never give me any books that interest me," Lillian pouted. Just then, a man who happened to hear their little conversation appeared from around the corner. The man announced, "My name is Mr. Linden, and I own a library, and I think I have just what you're looking for."
Thank you, Salma. I'm Davi. Do you want to go?
The mythical harp. On a beautiful Friday, Jack was over at Zach's house. They were talking about what they wanted to do. Then Jack had an idea about finding the mythical harp, which they heard online. Legend says that one day there was a plane crash that had, that happened, and it was full of magical artifacts, and all of them got lost in the Amazon rainforest. But the harp, but the harp was still in there. "Hey, how about we try to find the mythical harp?" said Jack. "A mythical harp, that anything you say while playing, it will come true." So Jack and Annie, called Annie, to meet up at the cafe. Zach, Jack and Zach found Annie outside of the cafe, and then Jack told Annie what they were doing about doing, but then Zach said, "I'm not going." Zach announced, "What you have to go," said Jack. "No, I'm not," said Zach. "Look, Zach, we need you because you're brave," said Jack. "Okay, fine. I'll go with you," said Zach. Then they all bought airplane, airplane tickets, and two days later, they flew all the way to the Amazon rainforest.
Mr. Linden's Library by Keira Sullivan. Bing, bing! The book fell from the top of the shelf. "Hi, Mr. Linden. Can I have this book?" said Annabelle. "Yes, yes, but I must warn you, this book is dangerous. It's a monster. It's a beast." "I wouldn't read it if I were you." "So are you sure you want to read this book?" She just thought there were monsters in the story, and the story was kind of scary because it was about a monster. But little did she know what was really going to happen. She didn't know the terrifying things that she would come across.
I'm Bosn Kehoa Lee, and I wrote a story on this picture and the house on Maple Street. "Three, two, one, engaging launch" is what Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson heard after the, after their son Troy pulled a lever in the basement. They should have expected this to happen after buying a house from Elon Musk. Earlier that day, Mr. Jefferson arrived at his new home from the grocery store. It was move-in day. Mr. Jefferson walked in joyfully and said to his son, "Hey, Troy, why don't you go explore the house?" "Okay, fine," Troy said, looking up, looking up from his phone. Troy slowly slopped down to the basement and mumbled, "I already hate this, and I already miss my old house." He kicked the old box in frustration. The small box banged off something and crashed. Troy was about to go on his phone until he saw a suspicious bookshelf out of the corner of his eye. He saw some old books, like Elephant and Piggy and the Pigeon Books. Then, in the corner, he saw an old CD he called Back in a Flash, and he pulled it. The CD didn't come out all the way, so he pulled harder. The bookshelf turned. Troy was shocked. Then he saw a light, like a spotlight pointing toward something. It was a lever. Troy didn't know what to do. Should he pull it or should he not? Troy put his hand on the lever, and almost in slow motion, he pulled it. Three, two, one, engaging launch. The house flew into the air. Troy ran upstairs, ran up the stairs. Everyone was standing there in the living room. It was the perfect liftoff.
Thank you very much. We wanted just to say thank you for the opportunity to do this. This was very exciting for all of us and super motivating to get our stories completed, to be able to attend and meet them tonight. So thank you.
Great job.
Well, thank you all for coming. That was wonderful. And being a retired teacher, I love project-based learning, and I also loved story starters. When I taught ELA, I used to do story starters, especially around Halloween with a haunted house and start a story. So very well done, especially difficult with having conversations in this story. Nice job, everybody. Nice job.
Good evening. I'm Bill Trant, the principal at Hanson Middle School. And tonight, we have some eighth graders here. We're going to do a historical reenactment. So for you, Madam Chair, a little history lesson tonight. To introduce, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Emerson, who is our star narrator. So she'll introduce it, and then they'll act out the duel between Aaron Burr and Alexander Hamilton.
Hi, I'm Emerson Boujola. A few of you might know my mom, Michelle Boujola. I don't know if you've ever heard of her. She's not that popular. Okay. Our activity, discussing the famous Hamilton-Burr duel, began when Mr. Merritt and Mr. Lopes win blocks began reading plays relating to historical figures and events. Students enjoyed learning about these figures in a different way, reading the lines and accents with emotions, and putting themselves into the shoes of these historical people. Our class hoped to do a play about the pilgrims, but we struggled to find the right one. In the meantime, we began watching Hamilton while we looked for, while we looked for potential options. Then it came to us. Could we reenact the famous duel between former Secretary of Treasury Alexander Hamilton and Vice President Aaron Burr? Yes, yes, we can. Using lessons that they used to teach us about the duel, Mr. Merritt and Mr. Lopes presented what a duel is and the reasons why someone may get into a duel, as well as the circumstances that led these two founding fathers to face one another in their famous duel. Before Thanksgiving break, we presented this information and performed the reenactment for Hanson Middle School's fifth graders. And now, we present our version of the Hamilton-Burr duel. Enjoy.
Early on the morning of July 11th, 1804, two men prepared themselves to duel on the cliffs of Weehawken, New Jersey. Vice, Vice President Aaron Burr and his second, William Van Ness, arrived with their party at the location first. Van Ness and the other members of the party began to clear the dueling ground for any debris and underbrush.
Shortly after, former Secretary of the Treasury and Burr's rival, Alexander Hamilton, his second, Judge Nathaniel Pendleton, and a doctor arrived. Pendleton carried the dueling pistols.
Hamilton and Burr exchanged salutations, and the two sides came together. The seconds then proceeded to make their arrangements and measure ten full paces. They then cast lots to determine position, and then loaded the pistols in each other's presence.
Once Hamilton and Burr had pistols in hand, the rules said that they must take up positions.
The doctor and the rest of Burr's group turned their back to the duelist so as not to bear witness. When the signal was given, they had three seconds to fire. It was at this point that the two seconds gave two completely different accounts of Hamilton's actions.
According to Judge Pendleton, Hamilton had predetermined that shooting Burr would be morally wrong, and so he fired into the air.
According to Van Ness, Hamilton showed every sign of planning to shoot Burr, aiming his pistol and putting on a pair of spectacles. Hamilton fired, and whether he meant to or not, he missed firing above Burr's head. Whatever Hamilton's intention, both Van Ness and Pendleton agreed that after Hamilton fired, Burr stood, took careful aim, and fired.
Hamilton fell instantly, and Burr at first seemed concerned for Hamilton, first stepping towards him and then fleeing with Van Ness and the rest of their party.
Burr was now wanted for murder. Pendleton rushed over to Hamilton and called over the doctor, who deemed Hamilton's wounds would be fatal. Hamilton was carried back to the boat he arrived in, rode back to New York, and died at his home 36 hours later.
And that was the end of Alexander Hamilton.
Thank you very much, guys. Very well done. Love that.
Good job, guys. Thank you. Thanks, folks.
Thank you for both schools tonight for doing that. Next, we have the Student Advisory Council report. So ladies, your turn.
No, we're waiting for Officer Poirier's presentation.
Hi, I'm Genevieve.
I'm Kayla.
I'm Donna.
And I'm Maddie.
So the contents of this presentation are going to include collected data from a student survey spanning November, from November 27th to December 5th, and it's also going to include actual student quotes and opinions that we highlighted. And we're also going to include one-on-one conversations that we included in the survey. And the questions that we asked were, "Do you enjoy school? What can be done so school can be improved for you? Is there anything you like that the school does and you want to continue?" And then, in one word, describe the environment of school for you. And then, lastly, we're going to share what we plan to do soon in the future. Thank you.
To gather info, we conducted a survey to the students of Whitman-Hanson High School on whether they generally enjoyed school. Based on the chart, the most common response was that those school, they thought school was just okay. Our second most common response was that they'd rather be anywhere else. We understand that most students are more inclined to just click, "I don't know, I don't like it," because it's the easiest answer. So we expanded upon our question and provided open response questions to give the students an opportunity to express their concerns and their ideas and how to better their school life.
So some of the specific questions that were asked was, "Is there anything that the school does and you would like to continue?" A lot of the students enjoyed free breakfast, the amount of electives our district offered, and the out-of-school educational trips. What can the school improve on? It's very half and half, but some students want the time to be pushed back later. Switch back to late starts with better traffic control rather than the Panther releases, and less homework, especially over breaks like Thanksgiving and Christmas break. And if you could describe school in one word, what were to be? Stressful, boring, don't enjoy, awesome. And most of the answers on that were negative.
From some of the student opinions that we gathered, these were some of them that generalized what we found. A lot of kids said they enjoy this posting, oh, sorry, excuse me, they appreciate how accepting the school is, the environment, how inclusive it is. They also liked the electives and the amount of opportunity, academic opportunities that they have. They also enjoy how the rallies and a lot of the school spirit.
Students also are requesting for the start time to be pushed back. This is despite the efforts made last year, they still think that school starts too early. And coming up next, we will be traveling and speaking to smaller groups of students to get more accurate results. We'll be going to both towns' middle schools, as well as the elementary school levels, trying to talk to some of the older kids like the fifth and fourth graders. And also within the high school, we're going to be conducting smaller group surveys, preferably one-on-one, to get more accurate results and more detailed responses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
We'll also just be adding that when we said, we did set out a high school survey, and we didn't get a lot of answers. It was very, a lot of non-response. So we're going to be trying to reach out more one-on-one and figure out what's the best way we can reach the opinions. So we're going to try improvement on that because our last attempt wasn't the best, but we know now. So we'll come back with more information next time, too.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you.
So if I can just add, folks, while you're still there, I had the pleasure to have lunch with them on Monday to go over some of this, and I said you can be negative. with them on Monday to go over some of this, and I said, you can be negative, you can be positive, share all the answers that the students gave. I think the overarching piece was we didn't get a lot of response. So these five young ladies are going to go out and really dig deep and talk to kids. The other piece we brainstormed was going to the middle schools and talking to multiple classes, not just student council, just getting into talking to kids. And at the elementary level, the fourth and fifth as well. And I appreciated you talking about some of the issues that were here, like the bathrooms. Check them out tomorrow. They should be all fixed. All right? They're going to meet with Dr. Jones on some of their issues and also the Director of Food Services about some of the things that came across. So I think really valuable information, both positive and negative, and we appreciate the negative because if we don't know it's broken, we can't fix it or work to fix it. So thank you for your efforts and keep on moving along.
Thank you.
Good work, girls.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yes, Don, yeah, we do.
I was going to ask how you distributed the survey.
So we did it through Google Form, and we emailed it to all the classes. But we also found that since everybody has tons and tons of emails, it gets cluttered and overlooked. So we find that even, not just for us, all surveys should be conducted mostly as much as we can, one-on-one, even if you can get a good chunk as a great representation, because even I went out during lunch and I got more response than we did on the survey. So we found that more beneficial. Just do one-on-one.
Glenn?
Is the survey anonymous?
Yes.
What about handing it out at lunch? Just passing them all out?
So another problem with handing out at lunch is that a lot of teachers would not really appreciate that.
Okay.
Because a lot of kids leave trash. So if we handed out...
You'd have to go back around and collect them all.
And some kids probably won't even fill it out, and it just ends up being a place mat for their lunch.
Okay.
So what did we decide, maybe using what?
A QR code. Yeah.
Clicking on your phone during lunch, having the QR codes on the lunch table?
Okay.
And they can bang it out right then and there.
Good idea. Very nice. Yes.
How many responses did you get?
We got 103 responses.
And how many students are on the school?
1050. So 10%.
We also...
Pretty much, yep.
We also brainstormed the idea of making an Instagram account or some other platform of social media, because more kids are likely inclined to check their phone than check their school computer. And there, we could even post the same survey, and more kids would likely to see that rather than through their email.
Very good.
Great job.
Very well thought out. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. So with our new sign-in, there's nobody here for public comment. So next, we have the approval of the meeting minutes of November 15, 2023.
Motion to accept.
Second?
Prove.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, Nino?
Thanks for that. So in the background, awaiting his turn to present is our new SRO, Officer Mark Poirier. Mark, if you want to come up to the podium, just so folks can see you. Kevin Harrington, a long-term SRO, was promoted to sergeant in the Whitman Police Force. Mark's a very familiar face in town, applied for the position, and Chief Hanlon emailed me to let me know that Mark was on board. He had hoped maybe, you know, three to four months, Kevin and he were going to split duties. Well, all of a sudden, Kevin was a full-time sergeant, and Mark is here. He was away at SRO training last weekend, and he's full on board in the town of Whitman. He and Derek are already partners, working hand in hand on certain things, so we're really appreciative to have Mark on board.
I'm excited. I'm excited. Sorry, it's a whole different role for me. I went to school with Chris. We know these schools. We've been here. I mean, it's fun to actually now walk, me go back through these schools, walk it through like I was there years ago. You know, obviously, it's a change of pace for me. I'm excited to get thrown in, and it's been fun so far. Thank you for having me.
We welcome you. Welcome. Okay, so next, we have the vote on the norms. Were there any more questions? We've had it a couple meetings now. Okay, so could we have a motion to accept the norms? They will be from now on printed up and placed in front of each one of you, and they will also be in the front when people sign in.
Motion to accept and distribute the norms.
Second.
In second? Okay. All in favor?
Yeah, can I just have a discussion?
Yep.
On number six, I absolutely agree with this and I support all the norms. I did want to make a comment that once a vote has been taken, a committee member can also explain why they may have voted that isn't in the majority. So I think sometimes that may be misunderstood as not supporting the majority. If somebody explains, I voted this way for this reason, however, the full committee has majority in moving forward, that's the decision.
Oh, we would absolutely have a conversation about it. Yes. It wouldn't just end. Yeah.
No, but even in the community or something, if something gets back and says, oh, well, John Byers has said she voted no for this reason. Yes, a vote was taken and a vote was made for certain reasons, but that doesn't mean I'm still, you know, or some, or any other member of that meeting. So I wanted to sort of clarify that, that someone can still say why you voted a certain way.
Sure.
I got a thing with the phone. I like this, but this is how I do things. Like, this is my Google Drive. This is my everything. I don't need this thing. I bring it because everyone else does. It's honestly about truth.
I'm not bringing mine either.
I know, but like, and even if there's a presentation and I wanted some information, I'm like, I just Wikipedia'd the Hamilton duel, you know? That's my phone. And I'm not allowed to do that anymore. I'm still going to do it.
Really?
I don't, I'm not playing with it or...
The thing is, we get complaints from the public.
I get it.
And we're voting on by the public, so that's why. And that's why also a lot of the information now is printed, so that if anybody has a problem with their laptop or with, you know, getting the information, now we should have it.
Can I just add?
Yes.
So a couple of years ago, Glenn, or I guess three years ago, Glenn, the Boston School Committee members' cell phones were confiscated because during a meeting, people thought that they were texting. So it's more to protect us, not to be punitive, because if someone sees you, if someone's watching and we're having a conversation about something, you might be looking something up, but they don't know.
I could do that right here, too, though.
And they might, they might want to see your phone.
Sure.
And it could be problematic. Right? So I look at this as more of a protection for us.
I do. I was told that at my very first meeting. My phone could get me in trouble.
Yeah.
I just don't do anything.
No, I know.
You know, I definitely hear what Glenn's saying, because, you know, I have my laptop in my bag, and if I pull it up, I have all the same functions on my laptop. I can text, I can do whatever I need to do. So, you know, I think that the idea is that, you know, we're supposed to just try to pay attention as much as we possibly can, right, to what's going on. And if you can balance that and work off your phone, I don't see it as a...
I'll do my absolute best to transition to this. Okay? How's that sound?
All right. We thank you, Glenn.
Hey for effort.
We thank you. Okay. Can we move to the vote, please?
Sure.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous? Thank you very much.
So last month, George and Nikki spoke about MCAS and interim assessments that we have, and we put it back on the agenda if there were any further questions upon that presentation. So if there's any further questions, George and Nick, you're here to try to answer anything that the committee has to ask.
Don, sorry.
On, actually, I'm just pulling it up, actually, the same slides. Thank you, George. Just looking back at this slide, and also, a tool that Desi provides is the MCAS Explorer. And for transparency, I shared it with the committee, and it's a mass.gov website, so it's available to anyone, and this is the public MCAS data. What I wanted to look at more closely is really just the grade six, which is highlighted in yellow, which Nikki and George spoke to in regards to the exceeding in meeting numbers from 2022 for English Language Arts. This is, goes from 38% down to 35% in 2023, and then math goes from 35 down to 32%. So I used this data tool and looked at the schools that we have for those grades, the two school buildings, and interestingly enough, this is an average, this 35%, and that's English Language Arts. So we have, so in fact, the English Language Arts for one middle school went from 35 in 2022 to up to 42%. So there was an increase, and then another middle school went from 40% in 2022 down to 33%. So the average of that looks like overall, the district has gone down three percentage points. And likewise, on the math, there is a significant, there's a drop in one school and not as much in another. So my question, really outside of the WIN block, and I'll add this caveat, right? This MCAS score is just one data point, right? We know that student success depends on many other things in the classroom and staff members and so forth, but MCAS is a data point, and we use it to make some decisions, we, not me, administration does. So we're using WIN block. We hear about WIN block. We heard about it tonight. I guess I would ask, outside of individual targets that students are getting for WIN block, sort of as a whole, access to education and by building, how do you see an approach if you're looking at numbers? Building-based or grade-level-based?
Sure. So if we look at this presentation, this presentation was now done twice, and we always focus on the district as a whole, for the public, for yourselves, and for everyone else. When we talk about, and we look at the data with our coordinators, when we look at the data with the principals, when we look at the data when the principals look at the individual teachers themselves, they get a lot more granular than we are. I have reasons, Nikki has reasons, we all have reasons as to what took place. We know that schools are different. We know that there are different, not only makeups of students, but we know that there are different issues that affect possibly some of the professional teaching staff that might have also dealt or led to some of these drops. But when we talk, we can get as granular as a student on a week, how they're doing, and we can get as granular as the class, the classes that an individual teacher has, and then the method of how they can improve. So our choice for presenting to all of you was, what is the district's look? I've said this a thousand times. When I was the principal of the Whitman Middle School, I did not care for what took place with the former administrations. When individual teachers and individual schools and individual subjects were laid out for the public, because schools are different, teachers are different, kids are different. So we've chosen to take the district view and the grade-level view as we have it. I do have all of those reports. They're as granular as we need them to be, as soon as, early as October when these came out, late September, and as late as Friday, we have another meeting dealing with these reports. As they match with diagnostics, as they match with the weekly assessments, as they match with the groups that are going to now change in January for the WIN blocks. So we can get granular. We know that. We are doing that. But we chose for this, I'll put in an I statement, I chose for this presentation to keep it at the district level.
All right. George, while you're up, in looking at the budget and looking at this specific and what we're working on to try to improve things.
Sure.
I think there's one thing, and I have talked to you about this and asked you the question, but maybe, you know, the public and some of the school committee would like to know, too. We have different types of help. We have the interventionists.
Yes.
We have instructional coaches and academic tutors. Can you explain what each one does?
Sure. So we have those categories that are in the union, but if you look at what a school has, so we have district interventionists at the elementary school level, a district interventionist for ELA and math at the elementary school. We also have one elementary curriculum coordinator. As we go to the secondary level, we now have four, roughly four, for the major subject curriculum coordinators. And then we have one data specialist. That, so the model changes a little bit, because you have per-subject coordinator at the secondary level, and you have one coordinator at the elementary. What those district people are in charge of is the coordinators run the whole program from curriculum to pacing to everything else in their subject areas. What the interventionists do is they set the diagnostic schedule with the coordinators, and then from there, they work on creating the groups based on how our students did. And what we've talked about is that you can take a diagnostic test as a fourth grader, let's say, and it'll give you targeted information per strand, per grade, per subject area as to how you're doing. You've seen tonight that some of our groups are above grade average, above their grade level average, and they're doing things to extend their learning. And then we have some groups who have some standard, if we're talking math, they might be, have a deficit in some of their standards, so that's how they're grouped, by their deficit at the grade level. So then they go to a series of teachers. This happens for 35 minutes a day, and in that time, they get their specific remedial help with a teacher for their targeted areas that they're missing in their, it's a gap in learning from wherever that gap is. So you could be a fourth grader with a second grade with missing something in fractions from grade two, missing something in multiplication from grade three. You get that support every day in WIN block. Excuse me, four out of five days. Also, though, they take their path and their individual path minutes. So what those path minutes do is, based on that diagnostic, they also get a computerized look that says where they're either on grade level, below grade level, in what. And then they also do their actionable minutes a week. So it's 45 minutes a week, and you're looking for 30 actionable minutes, meaning you're not just staring at it with the clock running. And in that time, you are also being able to remediate your deficit areas, or you're also able to stretch your learning if you're at grade level, and then you can go above grade level. That's for both reading and math. Now, what that does is, it allows the teacher to make informed decisions about what they're going to teach for the week, and it also allows them to see exactly where every student is on their learning level for the week, for the unit, for the course of action, for the course of time that they're doing. And what we're really seeing is that now the teacher can design lessons specific to the students in their class, because they have real-time data on where they are, what their deficits are, and where they need to move them. So when you put that all together, the look of the district is, is that we now don't, we no longer teach just the students in front of us in the way that we think to cover the curriculum, like some of us might have had, but we now have the ability to see what every student and what every gap and what every proficiency and what every extension that a student has in their learning in front of us, so we can design instruction that really helps them.
Okay. Thank you, George. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Hillary.
I just, just one thing, and I think we kind of touched base on it a couple meetings ago. It's really, I think, important that we keep in mind that until 10th grade, the kids know that MCAS doesn't count, and their mentality, for many of them, is that. And I, as someone who teaches an MCAS subject where it counts, I don't personally put a lot of stock in, like, when I get my students' eighth-grade scores, I'm like, yeah, okay, cool, because they didn't, they knew it doesn't count and it doesn't matter, right? And so I would just caution, you know, I think putting the data together is important, and it should be done, but I also think that, like we said, it's one data point. It's one data point, and, you know, if a kid knows, if kids are stressed out and they're going to school, and the parents say, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, because those are conversations that do happen, and that's okay, then we have to be cautious about how we're viewing this data and saying, you know, I think the iReady data might be, honestly, like with my own children, like, they, they look at iReady and they're like, we have, you know, the next couple weeks, we have diagnostics. We got diagnostics coming up, Mom. I got to do better, right? They know that MCAS is different than that, so just considering that and keeping that in mind.
And the scenario, and that's a great point, the scenario I just described was all about our diagnostics and our curriculum that we use.
Yeah.
And when we, what we presented, though, was the balance of the end of the diagnostic year as a correlated to MCAS. What you'll see in March are just the MCAS and some of the anecdotal...
Just the diagnostic.
I'm sorry, just the diagnostic. What we talked about last week, the anecdote, last couple of weeks, the anecdotal measures is you see that as students who aren't in the high-stakes MCAS test of 10th grade, they adhere more and they take their diagnostics and their learning path more seriously, because that's what they're learning every day. Also, in ELA and math, those programs are cyclical. So if I don't do something that's great, or I don't reach maximum proficiency, or I don't even reach proficiency on one week, those areas, the teacher knows, she can pull small groups, he can pull small groups, but those concepts keep coming up. So it's a cyclical program, because not everybody receives mastery all at once. But the ability to disaggregate what our students are learning, when they're learning it, how they're learning it, and then to actually create groups and create lessons based on that is something... lessons based on that is something we've, I've never seen, we've never had. And so that's what we're, we can do now with the curriculum that we have. But what you're saying about MCAS, it is only important when you get to 10th grade.
Well, yeah, and I think I would just add the other thing too. I mean, with iReady, the kids, they, they practice on iReady, they do the things, and then they take an assessment. And so they're getting an immediate response to that. These kids, I mean, my kids, when school starts, when am I going to get my MCAS back? I'm like, I don't know, the end of October? Like, I mean, it's, you know, so there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot happening and we all need to consider that when we look at this data.
Yes, Don?
One more thing I think we should consider is that we've heard both towns mention that they're going to do an audit of Whitman Hansen Regional School District, and they're going to look at the spending and they're going to see how impactful is the money spent. Both towns have signed this and it's just a matter of time. And this is one data point they've got to look at and look and see where is the spending and how impactful has it been? So I think that we're going to see, you know, some questions. I don't know what will be raised, but that's.
And I do, I do want to comment on that, that the superintendent and myself have received anything from either town saying that an audit was going to be done. The last we, I had heard was a couple of years ago when they had mentioned it, no follow-ups. We have not received any letters or any information from either town about the audit. And so we will be discussing this.
I was notified that the town was moving on an audit and Mr. Abrams was to contact me. But there is a document out there, I guess, about the audit.
But we have not.
I had not received that.
Received that. And we do not know, there's going to be discussion about that because we do not know when it's going to happen and if they, to happen at this point in time when we're in the middle of budget season, right, doesn't make sense.
Yeah, having said that, I have not been an auditor, nor do I play one on TV, nor did I stay at a Holiday Inn last night, but I would have a conversation with anyone who wants to talk about the efficacy of what we do to teach children, no matter what their outset is.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Anybody else?
May I follow up? That I have a copy of the letter. It has been seen by Whitman Finance Committee. It is signed by both town administrators. You may not have received it from either town, but I did share it with just you and the superintendent privately. But this is not a private document. It's signed. It does say that an audit will occur after the district completes its fiscal '23 year-end report. It's seven to eight pages. It's quite extensive.
Yeah, it is quite extensive and to not be informed by them are.
It was signed October 20.
Right, by the two towns, not by us. And so to, you know, it's going to be our job to provide the information. And we're going to talk a little bit more about this at another time, but I just, you know, would rather keep the conversation at that to let everybody know. Okay, next up, we have.
This is Danbrook. Use that microphone.
Somewhat hoarse, but I'll try to speak up as much as I can. Thank you. Good evening. This is the preliminary fiscal year '23 year-end closeout. It is not final yet. I still have a couple of things to do. This is what I have as of right now. And I'm going to be, I'm working on it every single day to try to get it as, done as quickly as possible, but it does take time and it's all manual, so it's difficult. I just, like I usually do, I try to just go through the documents one by one. If anybody has any questions or we could do that. The first document is the fiscal year '23 general fund, excuse me, revenue. And this was that, the column that says fiscal year '23 budget was $58.4 million. Again, I'm going to round numbers off just so I'm not, you know, reading numbers all night. It's 58, 58 million was the original budget. We added $650,000 in data breach money from excess and deficiency, or E and D, for a total of $59,307,250. And then the, the budget came in, excuse me, $814,000 over that, which 650 of that is the, is the data breach money. So about $160,000 over in revenue. It's, it's important to note on chapter 71, transportation, that's reimbursement for transportation, that was down $366,000. Homeless transportation reimbursement was down $62,000 versus the budget. We did have an increase in interest of $224,000. And we had some extra money from chapter 70 and charter 71 transportation, I'm sorry, charter school reimbursement. That's because we're doing our budget March 15th or so, the governor, they're finally passing our budget in August, July, August, and it goes back and forth. We have to have a budget for, in, I think it's the 17th or something, to present to the town. So we got more money than what we thought we would when we made our budget. So that's kind of the wash there. It's, you know, slightly up $164,000 or so on that. So that's the '23 general fund revenue. The next document is document number two in your packet. And these are, this is the equivalent of the Munis expenditure report with columns for encumbrances and the budgets and transfers. I'm assuming that we haven't, that no transfers are done yet, so that's why that column is blank. The revised budget is the column for the budget. The actual preliminary is, again, where we are as of right now, and then encumbered, and then an available budget. So I've moved some, I've had to go through every single expense and categorize it myself. That may or may not have been the way Munis did it previously, so there may be some numbers that go, are higher or lower depending on what I, what I decided to call things based on the line items. So the, you know, I don't know, we could go group by group if you'd like, but, you know, total administration is at the top of page two. That's $236,000 over budget. Instructions, which is on, instruction is the 200s, which is on about the middle of page five. That's $1.3 million over budget. The total trans, I'm sorry, total other student activities, sorry, let me say that again. Total pupil services, which is about the middle of page six, is $156,000 under budget. The 400s are operations and maintenance. That's $48,000 under budget, I'm sorry, over budget. Benefits and charges are $590,000 under budget. Acquisition to improve and replace fixed assets, those are the 700s, that's $106,000 under budget. Debt retirement was down about, under budget, over budget by about 4,000. And programs with other districts is $768,000 under budget. So, I mean, I just, that's a very quick overview, but some of the things that stand out is on page, page five, under 5100, I'm sorry, let me say that again, page seven, under 5100, total employee retirement. We had a $298,000 below budget on that, or savings, and that is money that goes to Plymouth County Retirement and to the Mass GIC, the Commonwealth. I had budgeted a 9% for both of those, those two things, there are two things that go in that line. And the, and it was, the Commonwealth was, the GIC was a zero. So that was $298,000 in savings there. We also saved money on health insurance. I had 3%, I'm sorry, it was five, I had 5% in for dental and 5% in for health insurance. Ended up being 3% for health insurance and zero for dental. So we saved $299,000 there. That's a little bit further down in total insurance programs on the same page. I can keep going. I don't know whether you want us to stop or if there are any questions, so.
Chair?
Yes, Don?
Can I ask a question?
On page eight.
Yes.
For the breach-related costs.
Oh, yeah, I haven't got to that, but yes.
Okay. So you've got actual preliminary, $79,000, and encumbered $399,000. Can you explain that expense line, how it's broken out?
Yes. If you want to skip to document 12.
Yeah, it's here somewhere.
In the, in the packet. It's a breakdown of the $650,000.
Can you hold that up for me, John? Which one are you going, which one are you jumping to?
Sorry.
Okay.
I hadn't got to it yet, but we could skip to it.
It's like way in the back.
Document 12 in the packet, if you're looking in the packet. If not, the title of it is Whitman Hansen Regional School District, FY '23 excess and deficiency usage.
Still big.
It's just a little.
Yeah. Cheat with you if you don't mind?
No.
I already got it in.
While we're looking, we, all the amounts of money that we got in the insurance, which I was going, I'm going to follow, follow up and talk about later, we had an insurance recovery fund for the insurance that we got for the breach. And again, I have to look up what the amount is, but it's, I'm going to round it off and say something like $543,000. That's the amount that the insurance company gave us for the breach and we put $543,000 of costs towards that. This, on this page here, the $479,000 is things that weren't covered by insurance. And that's, that's the rest of the, the things that were related. And then if you want a breakdown of each individual one, I don't have one, but I can get you one. We have a list of all the, the breach-related costs. So that, that would be 479. And again, when I get to the transfers part of my presentation, I'm proposing to the committee for discussion to put $53,654,87 to the business and finance clerical salaries line. I needed treasurer help. The computer, the computer didn't work, so we had to have, do everything by hand. So we've had treasurer help. And also, we had someone, we had to come up with the W2s by hand. We had to pay someone to actually go through one by one and total everything up. So that amount was $53,000. Further down there, $37,000, 37,823,92. Now we have a charge from our payroll company. It's not Munis anymore. It's, it's a, it's a separate company. Munis used to charge us both payroll and for the, for the computer, all in one lump sum. So the, I, what I did was I took the payroll company charges and I put them in my budget and that's the amount of payroll charges that, that the, is overage on the budget, is $37,000 for the, for the payroll company's charges. And then $64,000, again rounding the numbers off, is related to, that's the deficit in tech overtime. When you take a look, our tech people did a fantastic job and that was the overtime that went over the budget. So I'm proposing and, you know, later on to, that could go, that could be part of the $650,000 in a transfer. And then the last amount was $14,000 for additional paper. We had to do everything by paper and we had photocopy error expenses because of that. So I get a little bit out of order, but that's where we are. Is that?
Just back to the line item report on.
Yeah.
The original report.
Yeah.
I'm asking, because the column says actual preliminary expenses are $79,000. Does that mean that's what you've paid out and then you have encumbered $399,000?
Yes.
So have you not, have the district not paid for these costs yet?
No, we've paid for the costs, but they came after the end of the fiscal year. So they had to be encumbered. So we had, we paid them in, in July or August.
Okay. I'm confused because the top says as of 12/2, so, but yeah, it's really as of June 30.
Well, it's June 30. This is because it's fiscal year '23. So this is fiscal year '23 as of 12/2, which was when I did this report.
Okay.
Fiscal year '23 is, ends on June 30 of '23.
So for the full year of FY '23, when we were experiencing, recovering from the breach, we still didn't use $399,000 in expenses? We didn't spend that?
It was, it was allocated, but it wasn't spent until later in the year, yes.
Like after June 30? Okay. And then it says available is $170,000, but that's, again, not available because you have it all itemized.
If you were to approve those transfers, that's how I would present the, the money to be used.
Okay. Anybody else so far? Okay, go ahead, John.
I'll say.
I'm sorry, I have another question on page six. It's on, under facilities, sorry, page six.
Are you on the first?
Document two? Yep.
This is document number two.
Document two. Sorry, I'm trying to find it. It's, it's the line 5433, snow, inclement weather?
Yes.
So that expense was $69,000. We budgeted $30,000.
Yes.
So it's 30, or, and then the budget was revised to $35,000. So we went $33,000 over.
So the way to read that is, there was $5,749.25 of money that was carried over from last year to pay bills this year. And then there were $30,000 in the budget. So the total is 35,749, which is the total of those two. And we had $69,301,73 this year. So the, the deficit in that particular line is 33,552,48.
I guess I'm just wondering as a district, I remember last winter, I don't know that we even got anything to plow. So how did we go over budget or what that spending was?
So today, today I had people in.
No, but this is last year's.
I understand that. But last year, we did get snow. We didn't get plowable snow. We got snow and ice. And I could go back to the actual, but today I had the crews in. You had snow in Whitman. They had to come in at 4:00 in the morning to start preparing things. So we can go over actuals about this. It wasn't a bad winter, but I have to go back to the actual times that, and I don't remember if it was during FY '23, in October of '22, if we had any power issues that people were out and, and things like that. So those are the actuals that I have for billing from that department.
Okay. The last question I have is on page eight and it's the special ed tuition to other schools. So we budgeted 2.6 million, but the actual spend was 1.8 million. So it's like a savings.
Yeah, I found it.
Of $850,000.
So that's on page eight?
Yeah, page eight.
Can you give the number you're looking at, like 9100?
Yeah, it's 5901. It's.
I don't have that on page eight. I'm trying to follow along with.
Page eight.
And.
It's 26, so it's about midway down at 9100, under total tuition to mass schools.
Last page of the state.
So that'll.
5901.
91.
Yeah, I mean, it's, is that right? We, I mean, we saved, so special ed out of district was only 1.8 million. So it's 850,000 savings.
Well, the costs were more than that. It's the, we used circuit breaker money to offset some of those costs. And I was going to get to that when we get to the.
Okay, okay. I just noticed that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
But John, if you could just explain that 999, that 768, just the, total programs with other districts isn't just special education, correct? And that's your question, Don, right? On that line item? So you're on page eight, Don, John.
Yeah, I think.
Spent tuition to other schools.
I thought that was the question.
Thank you. That was in the wrong spot.
Yeah.
Okay, next.
Okay. Document number three, this one in your packet, Whitman Hansen Regional School District Revenue and Expenditure Schedule. Looks like that. It's got a yellow line on it, if you have a color printer. That yellow line is a grant that I haven't reconciled yet. That's why I'm not done. So you can look at that line and that, I know that's not correct and I did the best I could with where I am right now. So these numbers will change, probably not a lot, but they may change. This is every other fund other than the general fund. And it starts with food service at the top and then I grouped them according to the way the state wants things grouped. It may, or may not have been the way, actually it was not the way that was in, previously in, when it was presented out of the old Munis, but now in the new Munis, this is the way it's going to be looking. Again, the grants, these are all the grants that, and then it's state statute authorized revolving funds. And there's a circuit breaker amount of 2.4 million that came out. We got 2.25. So right now we have 1.566 in circuit breaker at the, this is as of June 30. The next group is the state other authorized revolving funds. The next group is the state other authorized revolving funds. And it goes down on all the other revolving funds and gifts. It has capital projects and trust funds, and then agency funds. Again, with this, you remember, you're going to see some negatives. I'm just looking very quickly, and I see on page one, Fund Number 2119, under total grants, SIR 3. It says minus $579,000. That doesn't mean we're in a deficit. That just means that the state didn't give us the money as of June 30th. On that particular one, we got money on, they held the money until July 6th. And then we also requested more money in August. And so these deficits are as of June 30th, but they are not deficits that are going to hurt our E and D. And they're not deficits in the fund in the sense that we overspent the money. Again, if you remember, what hits E and D is if you don't get the money in the first three months of the new year. So by September 30th, you had to have gotten the money actually in the door in order to not have a deficit. If you have a deficit, then it's taken off our E and D. So if you remember last year with Whitman Mould, it was $53,000 something. That's because it wasn't funded, and it didn't, and it was spent. It wasn't funded, and it was a deficit. We didn't get the money by September 30th because we didn't get it until next, I think it was the last time meeting, the last meeting. So again, the only deficit that I see at the moment, right now, that is a legitimate deficit that we're going to lose E and D for is on page, I wanted to, sorry, here we are, on page five. It's the last one in capital projects. And it's high school electronic card access systems. That was one, that was a capital project that was supposed to be used for the high school, but I think in some sort of mix-up with Hanson, I think it got, it was changed to elementary school and middle school on the actual vote. So that's going to be a deficit at the end of the year, but it's an easy fix if they choose to at the next town meeting. It's just change the voting to what, the way I believe we sent it over. It was just a little bit of a mix-up. So there's going to be a $19,000 hit to E and D. That's all I see right now. That's, again, I don't think things are going to change, but anything can happen. That's where we are right now on that. Any questions there? No, keep going? Okay. And then document four, document five, document six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, up to document 12. So documents four through 11 are just spreadsheets of every grant and what, who got paid out of what, what line they were paid from. And again, this is SIR 2, SIR 3, the 140 Title II Part A grant for '22 and '23. And then what I did was I put down the bottom this, when we punch grants in, we punch into something called ed grants. And we have to have a budget in there of what the budget, you know, why are you having the grant? What are you going to use it for? So I don't know if you've ever seen that before, but that's what's down the bottom of these grants is the actual line item, what we said we were going to spend it for, what the budget was in the ed grants when we asked for the grant, what we did spend it for, and what we have left, if anything. Again, I stopped on document six. This is the 140 grant, the Title II Part A. If you look down the bottom, there's $608 left in that grant. Again, this is as of June 30th. And these are all the people that we paid from, we paid. And these are all the line items that came from there, what line items they came from. Sometimes things get spent out of one line item, and we have to ask for an amendment. And, you know, we can justify the reason why we spent more in one item, if we didn't spend it out of another line item, they'll grant an amendment to the budget. So that's on every single one of the grants. I think I got them all. If I missed one, then I apologize. But I'm just trying to give as much backup as possible on all the grants.
Can I just jump in, John, just for a second?
Sure.
One thing that's really important about grants, especially the special education grants, is that we appropriate them based on a salary. And the grants don't change. They usually give us the same amount every year. They don't go up for cost of living. But that doesn't mean we don't, we lose the teacher the next year and go for a cheaper teacher. So the LEA budget has to supplement that as we go along. And, yeah, we get a lot of grant funding. I think it's great. But they don't necessarily keep up with the cost of living and steps and lanes as we go forward. And I think that's something we consider when we are doing this, and we get a lot of money from the state. It's super, and I'm going to keep getting it. But teacher salaries go up every year, and that means the LEA budget has to supplement that somehow. So just an FY, as we go into budget season, you know, we get a lot of money from grants, and we're going to tell the towns how much we get from grants that aren't covered by the towns. But there is a deficit that the LEA budget has to keep up with. If I have a teacher who's been getting paid through the grant, and it is now, you know, step 10, it was step 5 when we got started, and we hired her, which is a $15,000 to $20,000 difference, and you multiply that by 10, now you're already into the weeds with a deficit. So just a point of reference for the folks out there watching it as we're reviewing this, state money, state grants don't necessarily go with a cost of living increase every year.
Just to skip back, just very quickly, it's good that you said the LEA grant, because I had forgotten about this. This is on document seven. This is the 240 grant.
Yes, that's what I was referencing.
Then, so this is a grant where it's usually approved, it's almost the federal fiscal year. It's October 1st to September 30th. I think they technically, I think it's September 25th or something like that. But it's very close to the federal fiscal year for this grant, meaning that we get a grant in, for FY24, we can't spend the money until, again, I'm rounding the date off, October 1st of fiscal year '23. Like, so, I don't know if you remember last year, but we had a finding that the grants had, weren't on this fiscal, from our auditors, that it wasn't on this, the federal fiscal year. We had spent money earlier. Even though we had done this for the last 10 years here, they decided to write it up on the first year I was here. So that, I had to switch that. I changed everything there. Now this particular grant is on the fiscal year, of the federal fiscal year. And if you look in the middle there on, again, this is the 240 grant, there's some names there and what the descriptions are. And it says FY23 charged to the LEA budget. So that's $146,000 of the grant that people were going to be charged to the grant, but we couldn't because we hadn't started yet. Now we're on that, at least with this grant, we're on the correct time path where that won't happen again in fiscal year '24. So these, you know, this grant is, you know, if we spend money towards the grant prior to the grant being okayed, that comes out of the LEA budget. So where that happened on these sheets, I put it on there. At least I think I did.
Thanks for the clarification, John. That's important.
So document 12, we were just talking about, that's the data breach costs. And then 13 and 14, and 13 and 14 are, if we were, you don't need to vote on these transfers today. They can wait until the 20th. And I know we're going to have a budget subcommittee meeting next week. We could talk about, more about them. But this is where we are, where I am as of right now for within-function transfers and inter-function transfers. Again, I don't, if you remember, I think it says somewhere that I can make within-function transfers as long as I just announce them to the school committee at the next meeting. But then we found something saying that all budget line item transfers have to be approved by the school committee. So we had like a dichotomy there going on. I'd rather not do anything. I'd rather give them all, you know, bring it all forward and let you vote on them all, so there isn't any gray area at all. So document 13 are the within-function transfers. The functions are down the bottom. Again, 1,000 to 199, total administration. You know, those are all the functions with the budgets is. Again, it's easy just to skip to the end and look at page nine for the summary. So it's two, within-function is 2.57 million. And then as a percentage of the budget, the percentage is 4.4% of the approved budget. That's the last budget, that's the last page, page 10. It's similar to what it was last year. I'd have to look up what we had last year, but it's about the same. And the document 14 is the inter-function transfers. Those are ones that go from one function to another, the 1,000s to the 5,000s, or the 5,000s to the 6,000s. Again, there's three pages of that. Again, skipping to the end, the, this 1.6 million, 1,696 for amounts of transfers in inter-function. And that's 2.9%. So those would be the transfers if we were going to do them today, but we don't need to do them until the 20th.
I would recommend we do them on the 20th after we go through it with budget sub a little bit.
Okay. Again, document 15 is just an appropriations expenditure schedule. It's just a summary of what I just talked about, the original budget, the line item transfers if you were to do them, and then the final budget, and then expenditures, variances, and encumbered. Again, the, on page two, we're returning back on the general fund, 5,000, 915, 57, if this ends up being exactly where we are. Again, I still have that grant that I need to work on. And then finally, the last document, document 16, is where we are for revenues as of, in fiscal year '24 through September. Take a look, the budget is 6485. Right now, we've received 15.195. Slightly more than 75%, 74% who we need to go. That makes sense, because it's a quarter into the year. Things that are interesting, or at least worth discussion, is interest income. We budgeted $11,330 already this year through September. We've got $37,000. Again, it's about $12,000 a month, times 12, $144,000 if that continues.
John, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Just in regards to that, if, so we're looking at this FY24 budget now. The first page of the packet, if I compare that, that's FY23 that you're closing out. And I'm just noticing that we also, last year, same interest income had budgeted $11,000. But you reported that we earned overall $235,000. I mean, that's fantastic, getting $200,000 more in interest. I guess I'd like to make sure we're, we probably could have budgeted. Could we have budgeted more for interest income? I mean, we stuck with the $11,000 when we ended up getting $200,000. And likewise, when I look at the FY23 closeout, what worries me most is our state reimbursement on transportation, right? We saw that this is a $366,000 deficit, right? And therefore, when we look at FY24, we're expecting $1.483 million. But we just closed out the year, and we only got $1,060,000. So I'm afraid we might be another $300,000 to $400,000 short on this transportation.
I agree. And what I would say is that when the business director makes a recommendation on transportation reimbursement, the committee sticks with that recommendation and doesn't go over, because that's what happened in the past. So I did have a conversation with Josh Cutler. We should be in a better place at the closeout this year, because what Josh said was they level-funded over the last three years transportation reimbursement, and they upped it in this FY24 governor's budget for next year. So we should be okay. But I remember John making a recommendation last year of it 80% to 82%. And some folks were like, we should do 90% because that's what we got in the past.
Yep.
So I want, again, to listen to the person that I trust to make these decisions. And interest income, I understand too where we were. We weren't expecting that last year. So when we were budgeting in February, we didn't have an idea of where we are. And before John finishes, all these papers were done by hand. This wasn't computer-driven. John had to put all this data in by hand. And that's why when we got, we're delayed, he had to create, how many accounts for Munis? A lot. 211,000 accounts for Munis by hand. They're not a company that's working with us. We were working with them. They're not necessarily working for us. We're way down here. So I know things have been delayed in the past. He's working very hard. But all this information was done by hand. Two years ago, we could push a button, he could get a report. So I'm just saying that thank you for this information as we go through. We're still entering data by hand. We're still cutting paper checks, and we'll talk about that a little later. But we're almost out of the breach. But the breach significantly impacted all of our data and how we present things. So that interest income was something that was off to the side. Our treasurer didn't let us know. It was lost in the shuffle somewhere. So I think in, for FY25, I'd like to get an idea, hopefully conservative, maybe not 200 something thousand, but maybe we budgeted in so it takes, we can, it would impact our budget in a positive way, you know?
I mean, it's good that we're getting that to offset the reduction in that transportation.
Correct. But that was lucky.
Yes, Steve?
John, and I know we are doing these by hand. I get off there. Isn't there a way, though, to just mark on these documents? I remember someone was writing them in pen. But you can pull apart of the name of the file itself, the Excel, the spreadsheet, whatever, and just put it on in the footer of the header.
You want a number?
Why can't we not do that?
Yeah.
You want a number? Okay.
Well, I mean, it's like, you know, after a while, you get lost.
You want a page number?
You just can't keep up with it.
I got you.
I have the same problem.
And I thought, I thought it's not going to be handwritten, and then was going to continue, maybe it would be printed.
So in the header, you want it to say document 16?
Well, I think it's already there, but it's not here. And it's, there's no reference, really. I mean, you can say within and inter or whatever, but it's still going to get mixed up in people's heads and minds. It's very hard to follow.
Thanks, Steve. We'll look at that and make sure that.
It's just on the pages, that's all. Yeah.
Just to finish up, so down the bottom, the end-of-the-year report is due on the 12th. I should have it in by then. The likely chapter 71 transport submission is going to be $1.5 million, 1,5535. So then what I did down the bottom here is just said if we get 85%, if we get 90%, if we get 95%, if we get 100%, those are the amounts that we'd be getting. And the budget is, as was said earlier, is 1,483,707,80. So that would be the deficit or the surplus if we were to get 100%. And then the likely homeless transportation submission is $26,000. That is way under the 111 of the budget. So that's $85,000 less. Again, if you want to say, I'm going to just pick two numbers, 90% of chapter 71 would be $133,000 less. And $85,000 in likely homeless transport. Again, adding those numbers very quickly in my head at a very late hour is around $218,000. $120 of that would be covered by the interest revenue increase, and then we'd have to see from there. So it's, some of it will be covered, but not all of it.
Can I just ask you a simple question? As we close out, I'm a fourth grader now. We closed out FY23. We're not in a deficit like Brockton, right? We're not $14 million in the hole. We're not going to be on the front page. We balanced our budget.
Yes.
And were we able to put any excess revenues from the revenue side into E and D? And I'm just not asking you for a number, but we were able to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, out there, we balanced our budget through the breach, and we're able to move forward with kids. And FY24, we're working in now, hoping that we can work through it with the state. But also, understand in FY23, we were negotiating teachers' contracts too, without numbers that we put in in March of '22 for FY23. So thank you for this and making sure that everything balanced out the right way.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Okay, subcommittee reports. RAC committee, who's giving the report?
Chris, do you want to just jump in?
Yeah, sure, you can take it.
So Chris has been appointed Chair of the RAC. We did meet. We had a discussion, and some things were questioned, and the big question was the men from Mars to come and actually zoom in and answer some of the questions on the regional agreement. Our tentative date is, is January 8th to meet again. I think we've got some significant progress. As I mentioned before, the one sticking point's going to be transportation and how we break up transportation, especially non-mandated transportation and the numbers. But I think it's good, Committee, we got a good, good, good group, and we had some significant things done. Just the questions that came up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Budget Subcommittee, David?
So we plan on meeting Monday at 6:00 PM. We don't have an agenda finalized yet, but we'll have one posted tomorrow. So far, some of the topics we do plan on discussing is going a little more in depth to the Budget Subcommittee's scope, and just kind of touching base on that, and finalizing any vote if needed, refreshing the meeting minutes, and going over homeless transportation reimbursement projections. And then we're going to talk a little bit in depth about the line item transfers and anything else that John, Superintendent, or anyone else recommends in that regard.
Okay, very good, thank you. Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
We meet tomorrow night. We skipped November.
Oh, okay.
We meet tomorrow night, and we're going to watch a couple.
Yeah, okay. And South Shore?
South Shore Collaborative is looking for an executive director. The person is retiring in June, so we're in the process of looking for an executive director at the collaborative.
And Reed's?
So Mike Losh and I proposed, we came before you to ask if we could propose joining Reed's Academy, Reed's Collaborative. We met with them. Their board unanimously approved us. I believe there are 17 member towns, and each town's school committee has to approve us in. So we'll be approved at some point, but they have to go to each school committee meeting as we go. But it was a good meeting, and we'll be part of Reed's Collaborative once all 17 members bring us on board, and other cost savings for the district.
Okay, thank you. George, do we have any public comment?
Cindy signed up like five times. You're signed up five times for public comment.
Are you getting a stipend?
No, that's a good school. My contract's up.
Thank you. So we have no public comment today. Okay, so we do have some, an executive session. So this is to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. This is a voice vote to go into executive session. Steve?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Not me.
Not you.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay.
And we'll only come out to adjourn.
Yeah, we will only come out to adjourn.
To what?
There will be no votes taken today.
And she just did a roll call vote, so.
It could be a motion on that actually. I motion that we go into a second.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, you're supposed to help me on that.